Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Haverford Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for Monday, November 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik.
President.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here. Next, Chief, would you lead us in the pledge? Our next item on the agenda will be a historical commission presentation, a brass, sorry, a brass plaque program. There's a, it's a alliteration for you, for properties on the Historic Resource Survey. So I invite members of the Historical Commission before us to make their presentation. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm Ryan Rowland, Ward Nine. So I've been on the Historical Commission now. This is my fourth year, and one of the things I was, well, I was kind of volunteered to do was to create a historical plaque. And we're going to go over a little bit of the timeline of how we got to where we are at this point. So if I can remember how to do this, there we go. So this quote kind of spoke to me a little bit. There are a bunch of quotes that talk about the significance and the need for historical preservation, but, you know, guys like Teddy Roosevelt, Voltaire, Napoleon Bonaparte had very famous quotes on the subject. But Wendell Phillips, I thought, was kind of appropriate because he really would have fit in our generation today. Wendell Phillips was a prominent American abolitionist. He was an advocate for Native Americans, an orator, an attorney, who lived from 1811 to 1884. He was one of the most influential leaders of the antislavery movement in the United States before the Civil War. He also supported women's rights, labor rights, prison reform, and temperance. So as I said, Wendell Phillips would actually fit right in with our society today and flourish for sure. So the Haverford Township Historical Commission was established by the board back in 2010. Mission of the commission has been really to identify properties in the township that deserve to be protected from demolition or predatory development. Now, the goal has always been to make sure the varied and wonderful history of Haverford over the centuries is here to tell the story of where we've been for future generations. From the nation's first observatory, as you're looking at there, yes, that was the first observatory in the United States of America, to the home of the inventor of the slinky, Haverford has within its borders more than 100 properties and landmarks that create a tableau of diverse and wonderful historical pastiche. But in the last few years, there's been a misunderstanding of what the Historical Commission is really empowered to do. In my nearly four years on the commission, more than a few properties have resisted the call to be included on the historical survey. Now, this is the tool we use to determine which properties are, and landmarks should be protected, based on a database created when the commission was formed. Now, the perception has been that we are the draconian overlords that will flog you for doing any work on your property at all, whether it be interior or exterior. And I'm here to tell you and convince you, hopefully, that that's not what we're here to do. So here's a little bit of a timeline of where this commission came from. We started, as I mentioned, in 2010. The board established the Historic Resources Survey overlay, which identified the properties that are on the resources survey now. Now, the commission, we applied for and received a grant a few years ago, back in 2020, right before COVID, from the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission. The goal was to add some properties to the survey. Now, we issued a report that was done by a professional historian. Thirteen properties were identified at that point, but only three were added to the survey. And we got a lot of resistance from the other 10 that said, you know, I don't want to be on there because I don't want you to tell me what I need to do, what I need to make some changes to my property. So we thought, well, what are we going to do? So we decided a plaque program, after doing some internal investigation, might be something that would work. So it took almost two full years, but we finally finalized, or were close to finalizing, the plaque program. At least, we have the plaque available. So we thought, okay, what should it look like? Should it be little? Should it be big? Well, maybe it should be really prominent. But we thought first, what's going to inspire people to want to do this? Civic pride, maybe. Maybe just the fact that your property is something that is a special property in the township. Financial incentives. Well, we don't really have the budget, as the Historical Commission, to offer that. So that was kind of valid. So we really decided that some kind of an item to show that the property was special and interesting was what we wanted to do. So we researched other communities around the country, and we found that there were communities, really around the country and actually around the globe, that have found that adopting historical preservation through a plaque has been very successful, even locally in townships like Radnor, which has a very robust plaque program. It has worked for them. So again, we thought, okay, we've got to make, what is this thing going to look like? Do we want it to be really cool, really big? We thought, maybe, maybe not quite that prominent. I can't believe that's actually in front of a building, but it is. All right. So we looked at something like this. Now, these are the markers that you will see around the state, and if you've been anywhere in the state of Pennsylvania, there are hundreds of them. Well, the problem is, this particular marker requires an application to the State Historic Preservation Office. It's also very large, and it's a pedestal that you would put in front of your property. And, you know, not a lot of people want to necessarily flag their property quite that prominently, and it's very expensive. So then we looked at some other options. We looked at some other communities. So Trinnifern Township, this is the marker that they have. This actually is in one of our commission members' office buildings. City of Philadelphia obviously has a very robust program, too. In fact, they are very draconian in Philadelphia. They keep their plaques up for a long time, as you can see. That one's been somewhat through the wars. Kind of nice, kind of an interesting design, but we were like, eh, we want something that reflects more of the township. We toyed with initially making the marker the shape of the township, but it's a little irregular, and we thought, eh, maybe that wouldn't be the best. So we ultimately came up with this. So it's pretty classic. It has a really good look at the seal. It has the resource number of the property on the survey to identify it. We didn't think it was appropriate to put addresses in any more script on it. We wanted to keep it fairly simple. And of course, an indication that this is from the Haverford Township Historical Commission. So a couple of things. Okay, the first plaque, this one in particular, actually, is going to be going on the former Haverford Township Administration Building. So this one actually has a purpose. Additional plaques we will be able to order on request, and it's from a Pennsylvania company. We thought it was important to try to keep it in the Commonwealth. So we have a company that is producing these for us, and we're working out right now the final details of pricing and procedure. So everyone who's on the Historical Resource Survey now will be able to purchase one. We already have had several individuals and several organizations who've said, we would really love to have one of these. So slowly but surely, we're going to get more and more of these put out there. So that's what it looks like. And actually, I believe our president, Susanna, is here, and I think she has the actual plaque with her. So I will let her, you can play Hannah White if you want, or I can, yeah. So I'm here to present it to you. She gave me the authority. She's the boss, so she can do it. So it's brass, it's pretty heavy, but it's very sustainable. That's what, you have anything?
Actually, Larry, would you come out, like, so we could take a picture?
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Do you really want me to be the one holding it? All right, let's all come out.
Okay.
It's so rare that we present you all with something like this. I think it should be memorialized.
Boy, they're resisting. I was like, okay.
Just come on out.
He's got a suit on. He's got his dress on.
That's right. Let me get one with just you, Larry. I guess.
You don't want me in there, you want us down there.
Susanna, you should get out.
You want to pick?
All right.
Going wide around. Only go so wise. Ready? I'll take a couple. Ready, cut. Thank you. You guys are going to take care of that. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity. And again, I want to actually finish by thanking the two women who were up with me, Susanna Baruko and Stacy Maddox. They have been, they have started the commission. They were here from the very beginning, and so I'm just the, you know, the new guy trying to put something together, but they're the ones who've been really driving historical preservation in this town. And I appreciate them allowing me to help them with this, and hopefully, we can get a lot of properties on here. And thank you to Cheryl Forstie-Grupp, because she has been very supportive of us this year, too. So thank you.
I want to just also thank Dave Berman and Amy Cuthbertson, because they really helped us as we were trying to figure all of this stuff out, so thanks.
Stacy Maddox, anything? Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation and that extraordinary slideshow and the excellent commentary and the laugh. We could use them before the next item on our agenda, which is the Citizens Forum. The Citizens Forum will have 20 minutes of registered speakers, and then after that, we say 20 minutes, but anyone who wants to speak on an agenda item. I do have a full list of registered speakers who I will call up in a moment. After that, I will invite members of the public who wish to speak on an item on the agenda. I anticipate, I think reasonably, that there's going to be quite a few comments tonight, and for that reason, I am going to attempt to enforce a three limit, a three-minute limit on comments. I would encourage people, if they want to speak together or have someone speak on their behalf, they can do so and extend their time. But I am going to, just for purposes of being able to hear from everybody, try to enforce a time limit of the presentations. The first person on our list of registered speakers for this evening is Ms. Penelope Regatos. Ms. Regatos, yes, welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you said three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm afraid my topic is not as upbeat as the previous one, but I'm here to discuss the effects of gentrification in my neighborhood. I lived on Bonair section for 15 years, going to 16, and I see, I have seen multiple new construction going to my south, my north, my west, and my east, which translated to a lot of new people, young families, at least two cars per household, a dog and a cat, maybe two dogs. And that has put an impact on my quality of life, a big one. My new neighbors and not-so-new neighbors walk their dogs on my lawn, and they have a sense and a look of entitlement, because as long as they walk within seven to 10 feet, I don't know exactly what is the ordinance for utilities access, they think they can do that. There are no sidewalks, and I beg the difference, because I take care of my lawn, I pay for mowing, I fertilize it, and I shovel the snow. So unless if the township is willing to do sidewalks for those people to have their dogs urinating and defecated, I am at very much in distress of this new population that is taking over my property. And that's one issue. Another issue is the school bus. I have addressed it with the school board, and they told me that they have the police patrol. I've never seen any police car patrol. What I do see is parents with their SUVs parking and blocking my mailbox and my walkway, waiting for their kids, and while they're at it, they're socialized with their dogs and the dog parents and all of it. So in addition to that, I have the Bonair Firehouse half a block away from me that runs fire trucks up and down at any given time for no fire, just because dogs are barking early, it's 4:30 in the morning, endless construction, that huge 18-wheeler trucks drive, they take a car off on Bonair instead of using major roads like Glendale and Steele. And last but not least, a lot of neighbors running business from their homes, like selling cars, and blocking Bonair with five or six cars that they're selling, they're just parking them on the street. So that creates an issue, a traffic issue, a parking issue.
I am going to have to ask you to wrap up now, if you can.
And I'm wrapping up, that I am frustrated, because I pay taxes untimely and fully, and I feel like I'm being told to move out. As a matter of fact, one of the people told me that I should check in a 55-plus community, and I told her that I was there before her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Regatos. The next registered speaker is Peter Diskin.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak with, I believe is my truth. My wife and I, she is here tonight as well, have been homeowners at 40 Colfax Road in the Padac Farm section of the township for 32 years. We raised and educated three children in the township and have loved our life here, as have our kids. We have worried over traffic safety on our block, which is the first block of Colfax, as you turn in from Darby, referred to as the unit block. I didn't have the time or the energy up until this year, because I had been working full-time, to really address this issue, but I believe, having lived there for 32 years, I have an informed opinion about the speed of traffic and the behavior of the drivers on the block. To cut to the chase, I started exchanging emails with Commissioner McCluskey and Sergeant Long in Charger Special Operations for the police back in July, and I've had many exchanges and the opportunity to do a lot of research on this topic. I circulated a petition above, among my neighbors, to request the privilege of having parking on two sides of the street, because we are the exception in our area. Out of the many square blocks in the Padac Farm area, we are one of maybe two, three at the most, that are not allowed to have parking on both sides of the street, although Sergeant Long acknowledged that having parking on two sides of the street is considered by many to be the most effective means of calming traffic. In addition to calming the speed of the traffic, I struck on this idea, because I couldn't safely back out of my driveway this summer, because with college students home, the line of SUVs, Jeeps, and vans, all having to park on my side of Colfax Road, which has a partially blind, if not darn near completely blind curve, I couldn't see oncoming traffic from either direction as I tried to pull out of my driveway, and neither my wife nor I have late-model cars which have backup cameras. And then I said, well, if I can't see the cars coming toward me, they can't possibly see the children on our street. By count this afternoon, there are at least 15 children under the age of 10 on the first block of Colfax Road, again, the unit block. So what I initially proposed was, with petitions, getting allowance for parking on both sides of the street. There are concerns about safety. Traffic studies were done. There were reasons why we didn't meet the criteria. Again, 74% of the residents' signatures, instead of what is purported to be the 80% for traffic calming. I repeat, this is not solely a traffic calming issue. This is a sightline issue. It addresses two issues. So I don't think the 80% should be a rule-out for my proposal. Secondly, I've done a lot of deep digging. I've discovered the Pennsylvania Traffic Calming Handbook, which was written by people at Bucknell University in 2012. It allows for, and in fact encourages, flexibility in local communities to address the needs of those communities. And nowhere in there did I see any reference to 80%. I saw between 50 and 70% is required for approval.
Mr. Diskin, I will, I will have to ask you to summarize now.
I'm going to summarize as quickly as I can. I have proposed many different alternatives. If parking is not possible on both sides, there would include lifting the ban on one-way or two-way traffic on Hillcrest during rush hour, because everybody that can't turn down Hillcrest, the street after us, now dives down Colfax to avoid the intersection of Darby and Eagle. There are no speed limit signs posted, there are no rolling stop signs, are going to cost you extra money signs posted, there, I think, is poor enforcement of full stops in our neighborhood. I could go on and on. I have done a deep dive, and I would propose, and I would offer my help in the commissioners, as well as the police, in doing a deeper discussion of this at a further date. I'm here to advocate, not argue. I've been a nurse for 25 years, and I recognize a safety concern when I see one, and I'm not afraid to press for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diskin. Our next registered speaker is Jake Swan. Welcome back, Mr. Swan.
Good evening, commissioners. I don't want you to think that I necessarily enjoy doing this on my weekday evenings. I would love it if I wasn't coming here quite so often.
We love doing it.
I know you do, and we thank you.
You're most welcome.
I'm here tonight to inform the board that last week, an appeal to the zoning hearing board's decision in case C-2317 was filed with the Court of Common Pleas. We, the appellant, urge the board to consider intervening in order to protect the interests of the township. And Dave, I'll just.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Swan. Our next registered speaker is Kathy Case.
Hello, my name is Kathy Case. I live at one, excuse me.
Good evening.
Good evening, yes. I live at 121 County Line Road, and like Jake, I don't really like having to spend as much time in my retirement doing what I'm doing now. I'm sorry, I thought he was introducing the topic of the Polo Field, so I'm a little bollixed, but, so I'm here to talk about the agreement that's before you for approval at this meeting. Our community had not seen this agreement until it appeared on the agenda. Previous versions of it were not the same as what you're looking at. So we have had exactly three days to organize a response to this. You've all received some letters from us. I'm sure it would have been more if we had more time. You've received letters from me, you've received letters from the Brinford Civic Association, and I know individuals have sent letters expressing their opinions. So I'm here to ask you to delay a vote on this issue. There is absolutely no downside for Haverford Township to delay this until it can be fully vetted in the community. We had one public meeting on a draft that's not the one before you. We had an agreement that was sent out to us November 3rd. We were preparing a response to that, and we thought we had plenty of time, but we apparently did not. There are things in this agreement that's before you today that we have never seen before. For example, ownership of the field was supposed to be the big prize of this agreement. The only public meeting we had to discuss the first draft, which really was only issued a month ago, I believe, October 12th, everyone objected to the 10 years, plus 10 years renewal term in that draft. Almost every speaker at that meeting mentioned it, and the subsequent ones said, somebody's already addressed this. So no one in the community had seen the draft that you had before, but now we discover that it's been added to it, that it's not only the 10 years plus 10 years, but Lower Marion now has the right to renew for reoccurring 10 years. In other words, forever. So Lower Marion School District gets exclusive spring use of two prime baseball fields for $275,000 for in perpetuity. That is not acceptable, and most of the community agrees with that. As I say, you get more letters, but we haven't had time. We haven't had time to do a survey, we haven't had time to get a response from the community about this draft. We haven't had time. So I'm asking you as, and to point out that that's the only thing this community will get from this deal. Nothing else. We'll just get angry neighbors, more traffic, more trees coming down, and a huge lump of asphalt in the middle of a green space in the field. And several of you on this board are lawyers, and I would ask you, would you advise your clients to approve this agreement? I feel it's the duty of this board to protect Haverford Township and its residents, not to give forever gifts to Lower Marion. Please, do your duty and either vote to table this motion until we get a better deal, or just vote no, which would have the same effect. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Diane Dretlaw. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Good evening, and welcome back.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing what residents have to say. Coming after Kathy, the last speaker, I have to say that we didn't coordinate the comments, but some of mine are falling along the same line. I'm, I'm going to refer to my notes. I want to keep this as brief as I can, knowing what a packed agenda this is, but I want to be able to, tonight, to also urge you to table a vote on the Polo Field Agreement, and I'd like to explain why briefly. First, I want to say I am not in any way, shape, or form placing blame on anyone when I say that this agreement needs an important revision, in my opinion. While I've been making my position known at many discussions up till now, I evidently haven't done a clear enough job in convincing and relaying that, so I hope to do that now. But I want to be especially clear now in thanking Commissioner Cavender for all that she's done to help craft a responsible agreement for the Polo Field. She's talked with neighbors, listened to perspectives, understood what the Polo Field means to everyone, young, old, kids, adults, who live around and enjoy this green space we have, this kind of oasis in our very tightly-built community with homes that ring the Polo Field all the way around. Laura's brought many of you commissioners to the field to walk it, to talk with people, to learn what's important, and she's to be commended for her effort, including pivoting away from the Railroad Avenue bus drop-off and pickup, which was devastating. avenue bus drop-off and pickup, which was a devastating one for our neighborhood, and now buses would use the parking lot. Sincere thanks also to Dave Berman and other staff who have worked to develop an agreement and make changes that have been proposed. The issue I want to discuss, though, is this very basic one upon which this agreement depends, and that I think Havreford Township needs. I think without it, the township loses a real valuable tool for accountability and ability to make changes. The agreement right now provides that the township will take ownership by deed of the polo field. This is great and makes perfect sense since it's wholly within our boundaries. However, Lower Marion, I believe, has requested the use of the fields in perpetuity, because for decades, the townships have used the fields jointly. Going forward, with change of ownership, though, will or should that always be? Should we agree to that? Who does it really benefit? Maybe not Havreford Township. If the park is owned by our township, isn't it detrimental to have a 10-year use agreement that may automatically renew for another 10 years and another 10 years? So even if we intend to share that use going forward, how can we possibly foresee changes our neighborhood and the township may want to make in usage in coming years? How could we develop a master plan for the park that in the future might state the community's desire for neighborhood space in that park, rather than relying on as many playing fields as there currently are? Maybe the playing fields in the future will be too much, and there's too much use for the maintenance that can be provided.
Ms. Dretlaw, I am going to have to ask you to summarize now, if you could.
Okay. And what about increased consideration or payment for use of a field that might be very different five years from now than it is currently? Why not require a fixed-term contract between the townships for a period like five years, 10 if it must be, and with an expiration date, and a commitment to negotiate, renegotiate in good faith between the parties? And if the parties don't reach agreement, it would terminate. This way, all terms and conditions can be renegotiated, and our township is not frozen in the position of providing 50% use of the playing fields if we learn there's a greater need from Havreford Township groups and playing groups, even schools, in the future. So I'm going to skip down so that I can close and leave you, but I think practically speaking, we have to look at what purpose this nonspecific term serves. You wouldn't negotiate a contract for a manager that just automatically renewed, or have a lease for a property that automatically renews. Giving a fixed term allows accountability, more control, a living contract that both townships work to live up to. So please table or delay this for 30 days, whatever time it takes to decide. I know Lower Marion is planning to vote on this as well this week, but you can do this. You can table it, you can take the time you need to do it right, make the revisions. If you're dead-set for a renewing contract, at least make it subject to negotiations over all terms, conditions, and consideration, at least 90 days before renewal, with the ability to terminate if you can't reach agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dretlaw. I thought I was going to have to give Mr. Berman the Heimlich when I heard we have to get rid of our manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for what you've been doing so far. I echo the sentiments of all of the previous speakers. Thank you to Laura for her leadership in this. Now, certainly, the agreement is improved, but again, everyone has asked that the details be gotten right, and we're not at that point yet. So I am going to join the general group here, I think there are a lot of us, who want to say, "Please table the vote until we can iron out some other portions of this." And I'm going to make a couple of points. It's important that the agreement includes something that's missing: a clear statement of the parties to their commitment to the environment, to preserve, protect, and enhance the natural features and the ecosystem of the polo field, tree conservation, new tree plantings, and managing storm water. This is part of the vision for the future. This is a jewel, and perhaps the lungs of this portion of the community. And I sit myself on the shade tree commission, and this is one issue that we face all the time. So the maintenance, for example, agreement includes trimming, but no planting. So we want to look at this as part of that. Also, we would like to have some general statement to the primary, if not exclusive, interests of the neighbors in protecting that interest. A commitment by Havreford Township to form and consult with the neighbors, an advisory committee which would be notified of any proposed changes to the field, and given the opportunity to be consulted and heard on capital improvements, and at a place, and any concerns about maintenance. Think about what this does. You have an engaged community. We want to continue to be part of this. If we have this advisory committee, and it's also a place where parks and rec will not have to hear from 1,000 different people about a situation, but hear from one group who will funnel and be active in the community. So I think that would be a big improvement. And finally, Lower Marion's obligations toward the transfer of ownership need to be spelled out more clearly. Missing is the commitment now to take the steps necessary to reconstitute the Playfield Association. If it's not clear now, it's going to be a fight later. There are some sections—I teach English, so shout-out to the fellow English teacher on the commission—but notice that on paragraph four, it says, "The agreement is intended to reduce past writings and understandings." And I think what happened is our notion of what's gone on in the past is kind of overshadowing what we're doing in our vision for the future. So we want to be clear that although we recognize and accept the past, we want to know that this is a new vision for the future that will recognize all the elements of the polo field. So thank you for your attention, and good luck. It's going to be a long evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sar. That concludes the portion of the citizens' forum that is registered speakers. We now move to anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any agenda item. As a reminder for folks who haven't yet spoken but plan to speak on the polo field, it is an item on the agenda, so this is a time when you can speak, as well as anybody else who wants to speak on any other item that we're taking action on tonight. I see your hand. Thank you, sir. I'm going to do as I always do and start with the front left here, and is there anybody in the front row who would like to speak? Is there anyone in the second row on the left side who'd like to speak? Is there anyone in the third row who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. And when you come forward, just please identify yourself. It's not necessary to give your specific address, but if you just want to identify yourself as a Havreford Township resident, that is for whom this part of the meeting is designed.
I don't mind identifying myself. You've seen me here a few times. I'm Mia Brower. I live at 123 County Line Road. I've been there for 37 years. The polo field has always been one of those wonderful gathering places. It's fine to hear the screaming of the kids at 3:00 in the afternoon. I don't want a polo field with lights overhead. I don't want a polo field with astroturf or whatever else you call it. And there's no provision in this agreement that protects the polo field as a park. If we wanted a professional playing field like you have down at the crack, that would be a different thing. Putting lights in, and you have created—talking about creating a new board that gives Havreford Township only 1/3 control and 2/3 control of this piece of property, although we own the title, 2/3 of the control has been handed over to Lower Marion Township, 1/3 to the Township Commission, 1/3 to the school board. That doesn't make sense. We're shooting ourselves in our feet. Keep going, we're going to be taking off the whole leg pretty soon. The other problem that we have is that in losing this control, we lose it indefinitely. It may as well have a little indentation on the map that comes in and calls it Lower Marion Township, because we will have no say in it, we won't be able to walk back there with our dogs. A picnic on Saturday or Sunday with family from out of town will not be possible because of how many teams are being registered to play there. And the enjoyment of it is we're being eliminated from a part of our own community. So I'd like you strongly, as other members have asked, speakers have asked, please table this tonight. Let it—us have time. Meet with us. If you have to sit down—if I have to sit there for six hours and go over issues—I'm more than willing. I know there's enough other people who will. But to rush through this makes me ask, "What's the reason?" They don't even start until March 5th, and just as a side note, there's no porta-potties there until April 15th, and my backyard should not be their porta-potty. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dretlaw. Thank you. In the same row? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'll be very quick. I want to invite all of you to take a look at Lower Marion's plan for the polo field. It's available on the website.
Could you just identify who you are, sir?
Jacques Kachudal. That plan includes putting in astroturf, putting in lights, putting in all sorts of things that are outlined as not happening in your agreement. Take a look at that agreement. It was first put together in, I believe, 2010, sometime around there. It's been updated. Now, it's up to 2022, and I have no reason to believe that it won't be updated with the same sorts of ideas. It is everything that we have been opposed to. And now you're about to sign an agreement with these people. By the way, one thing that is repeated over and over and over again in this agreement is having control over the field. So read it for yourselves. Don't take my word for it. I'm disgusted with this, frankly. I'm disgusted with the whole affair. It's been one thing after another. The last agreement that we got, so-called agreement, included things that we've been opposing from the beginning. What's going on with you guys? Right? I don't understand. We feel betrayed. We want good faith in talking with you, in arguing. I'm sorry to take this tone, but it's been a long year and a half, and none of us really want to be here. Thank you very much for listening.
Anybody else in that row who would like to speak? This is the third row. Moving to the fourth row, the left side?
My name's Ray Cowan. I live on 629 Deaton Road, which is adjacent to the polo field. And one of the things that comes to mind first is, why are we trying to solve Lower Marion's field problem in Havreford Township? Why are we doing that? It's not that that township doesn't have a lot of money. I mean, I work in that township, and I know there's a lot of money there. It will have a substantial impact on our neighborhood. It's already—car, bike, one side of the streets, cars the other side. It's cars everywhere in this neighborhood. There's no parking, and we're going to bring in additional buses on County Line Road, which is a very narrow road. You're going to try to drive buses into this polo road. And the intersection at the corner of Old Lancaster and County Line, it's a pain in the neck, to put it mildly, and at the bottom, there's a five-points intersection, which is also a pain in the neck. And then, why is it that we're building this new driveway turnaround? Why don't we ask Lower Marion Township to use buses with smaller wheelbases so they can turn around in the existing parking lot as it is? And what about the people that are going to visit, the teams that are coming to play Lower Marion? What are we going to do with those buses? This is like—this agreement has changed unbelievably over just the last few days. I have never even seen that map with this circle in it. I went there today. I live nearby, and I measured what I thought was 40 feet they were going to take. It's not 40 feet, it's 100 feet of the field that they're going to take for buses to turn around. I don't think that we should be kicking out St. John Newman's people that are using that field to accommodate Lower Marion. And I think the agreement with this perpetuity idea, where they lease for 10 years, then another lease for 10 years, then five years, and then they get another four, five-year leases, which ends up being approximately 35 years that they get the lease. When do we get the ownership of the polo field? That's what I want to know. Why are you voting for this so quickly? Who is benefiting from this agreement? I don't believe it's us in the township. I think Lower Marion would be benefiting, and the idea that they would possibly put lights and sound systems or dugouts on this field—this field is a family field that you can use to play baseball, softball, and whatever sport that you might soccer. It's idyllic in this field. It's not, for the most part, overused. I totally disagree with the agreement, the way it is written right now. I think it should be tabled and rethought out, and redefined all the aspects of the agreement so we understand exactly what we are signing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in that row who would like to speak?
Good evening, again.
Welcome back.
My name's Jake Swan, 522 Oakley Road, Ward 5.
Were you duly chastised for not saying enough last time, Mr. Swan?
I did not introduce myself last time. I'm here this evening representing the Brinford Civic Association. I stand here tonight in order to urge all nine of you to support a motion to postpone today's scheduled vote on the approval of the agreement regarding the use and maintenance of the polo field. We do not urge you to do this because we are, as a matter of principle, opposed to Havreford and Lower Marion cooperating at the polo field. We do not do this because we are, as a matter of principle, unwilling to accommodate Blackrock Middle Schools baseball and softball teams in the short term. We request that you postpone the agreement for the simple reason that we think the township and the polo field community deserve a better agreement. For a contract that will be enforced for 20 years or potentially forever, the current draft is hopelessly inadequate. To start, too much is being asked of the agreement. It is simultaneously being asked to do six things involving commitments from four entities, two of which are not even party to the agreement. The six things are: One, it's supposed to regulate the relationship between the townships as colesses of the property—the polo field—from a third entity. It's also supposed to establish a binding process for the transfer of ownership of the said property from the third entity to one of the lesses, Havreford Township. Third, it's supposed to regulate the terms of the relationship between the two townships when Havreford Township will be the lesser and Lower Marion the lesssee. It also sets forth terms for a one-time payment of $275,000 from a fourth entity, the Lower Marion School District, which is not even party to this agreement, in order to secure a multi-year permit for two of the five playing fields. Five, it sets forth the terms for a one-time payment of $115,000 from this fourth entity for an as-yet-to-be-specified improvement to the polo field parking lot. And six, it sets forth the requirement for the townships and the fourth party to split the as-yet-to-be-specified cost of an as-yet-to-be-specified improvement to the polo field access road. In attempting to accomplish so many things simultaneously, the agreement fails to do any of them adequately. The second reason we request postponement is for the simple reason that, as mentioned above, so many of the details of this agreement have yet to be finalized. The third reason is that the language of the agreement is generally loose, sloppy, inconsistent, and ambiguous. Lastly, the term of this agreement— It is unreasonable for there to be a possibility that such a flawed agreement could be indefinitely renewed. In closing, I'd like to say that this moment reminds me of a similar moment in the not-so-distant past, when the draft comprehensive plan came to the Board of Commissioners for approval. The draft was poorly written, full of deficiencies, and lacking in vision. The township deserved better, and the Board of Commissioners had the courage to recognize this fact and decided to force a rewrite, throwing away years of work. We sincerely hope that the Board of Commissioners will take a similar stance today with this draft agreement. Postpone the vote until we can give the township and the polo field community an agreement we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Anyone else in that row? Moving to the next row? Yeah?
Hello to all. My name is Lynn Elliott, and I wanna say I support everything that my neighbors have already said, but I want to speak about a couple of things very specifically. First, a document that's been published by Lower Marion Township, and Jacques already alluded to this, where it talks about the polo field and says, "Consider the potential of developing this site as a sports complex with a synthetic turf field and lighting. The facilities would serve the school district, the Lower Marion Township Parks and Recreation Department, and community sports leagues." They don't even mention Haverford Township. The agreement you're about to sign puts the polo field on the brink of becoming a Lower Marion School District satellite sports complex. You think your friends in Lower Marion would never do this to us, but they already are. They are getting us to agree to pave over our parkland, to build them an 80-by-100-foot bus turnaround, big enough to accommodate four 84-passenger school buses, the biggest buses made. You don't need 84-passenger buses for a middle school softball team with 15 players. Who might need an 84-passenger bus? A high school sports team. Second, Lower Marion assured Commissioner Cavender that they were okay with this newest draft having a revision prohibiting lights. But how did that sentence about the lights actually get revised in this version you're about to vote on? Just to say that Lower Marion does not have the unilateral right to install lights. That is not a prohibition. That just means they have to ask permission. So why did they tell Commissioner Cavender one thing, but do another? Because they want to be able to have lights. Once this agreement is signed, that's exactly what they'll have, a contract that allows them to install lights as long as they get permission. Just imagine what having an 80-foot-tall stadium light 10 feet from your backyard would be like. The people on Penn Street with backyards next to the baseball outfield are facing that possibility. Not just how ugly and intrusive the lights would be, but what about the hit to their property values? 80-foot-tall lights are what Lower Marion High School wanted to put around Arnold Field, but the neighbors sued to stop them. So now, what does Lower Marion have? An agreement with us that opens the door to lights, plus a bus turnaround for multiple 84-passenger buses. All they would still need for their sports complex is the ability to expand their use of the polo field beyond just Blackrock Middle School. And that's what paragraph 5E on page four gives them. Lower Marion School District just needs our permission to use the fields for anything other than Blackrock. So we are opening the door to expansion across their school district. And again, in Lower Marion Township's agreement with their school district, they can expand to any school, including high schools, any team, any sport, as long as they get permission. So to accomplish what Lower Marion set out to do in this greater and greener plan to develop the polo field for their school district's use, including installing lights, this agreement, as it is written, gives them everything they need. But you can still correct this. We, as a township, need to take a step back and see how enormously this deal has expanded, way beyond what we were promised by Lower Marion. We were told Blackrock Middle School only, no lights, no dugouts, no expansion to other schools and other teams. You can still do that easily with this agreement. The simple change needed to paragraph three on page two, "Lights, sound systems, and other permanent installations are prohibited." Period. And for paragraph 5E on page four, "Use by Lower Marion School District's schools, sports, or teams other than Blackrock Middle School's softball and baseball is prohibited." Period. And, I only have one page, and some people were very short. Could I take some of their time?
You can take mine.
Thank you. And in Lower Marion Township's agreement with their school district, exhibit E, another simple change, "No additional uses allowed." Period. If you make just those simple changes, there will be no need to build a giant bus turnaround. You won't need to pave over more of our parkland. They can use smaller buses, as someone else said, and use the existing parking lot without a giant bus turnaround. Bring this back to the smaller scope Lower Marion promised all of us. That would satisfy Blackrock, that would save the neighborhood around the field. The only thing this board needs to do to make that happen is to postpone tonight's vote until those simple revisions can be made, and some of the others that have been mentioned. Once this agreement is approved, it will be impossible to change. Now is the time to table this agreement pending revisions. If you cannot table it, then I ask that you vote no tonight. Even if you want to see this deal go through eventually, it is not ready yet. A no vote gives everyone time to get this right, and it needs to be right before it is approved. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
In the back row on the left, anybody else like to speak? The front row here on the right? Yes, sir, and then sir.
My neighbors, my neighbors and friends here have come with many reasons.
Sir, if you could just identify yourself.
My name is Ken Sands.
Ken Sands.
I live on Dayton Road. The polo field is directly across the street from my house. What our neighbors are asking is for you to postpone this vote for many reasons, and I won't go into them, because you've heard them. I know neighbors have sent emails to all of the board members, including my wife. And we just don't want this agreement. Things can be worked out later, maybe? I don't know. But we're not in agreement with it, and we don't want it. If you drive into the polo field, the sign there says, "Haverford Township," not Lower Marion. It's our township. We wanna keep it our township. And I'm afraid that tonight, if you vote on this and don't table it, or say no, the polo field's not gonna be the polo field. We're gonna lose it. We really are. And I know some people are speaking tonight, some are not, but I would like the people in the, in the audience, stand up, who don't want this agreement to be voted yes tonight. Please. There are many people here that don't wanna talk.
Thank you all for being here.
Pardon me?
I said, "Thank you all for being here."
Thank you. Thank you for being here. But we just, we don't want it. And, like I said, Lower Marion is Lower Marion, and they're gonna do what they wanna do. And we don't trust them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Sir?
Hi, I'm Peter, I'm Peter Landry. I live on Polo Road, across from the polo field. Lynn Elliott's talk was a great segue from my greatest concern, one of my greatest concerns about the agreement. I know there's been a lot of worry in the community when we read through the Lower Marion agreement with the Lower Marion School District. And I think it needs to be said very emphatically that any internal agreements in Lower Marion are subservient to any agreement between the two townships. That would go a long way to me, to, to relieve some of the anxiety about what the school district is gonna do, or what its plan is. My feeling is, they can make all the agreements they want internally, but this deal trumps them all. And that we should make that clear. I think that somewhere in it, it does say that the, the Lower Marion School District deal is subject to this agreement. But I think it needs to be stronger than that. It needs to say, "It is subservient to this agreement," and that Haverford Township has the authority to, to trump that. On top of that, I think that the language can be stronger. I don't see that having to ask permission is soft or squishy. You have to ask permission, and you still need to get that permission. And if Haverford has the right to grant that permission or deny it, I think that we do have a strong position, or a reasonably strong position. I don't have no objection to making it stronger, certainly. And I would hope that we would take time to do that. I think that the sentiment tonight is pretty clear. I was not ready to say vote or no vote, but I think that, I would hope that all of you would take a moment to take your job seriously and to reflect on, with a clear mind and impassionately about this deal and what it means to the community. And I hope that you will do that. Whether that means tabling tonight and revising later, that's gonna be up to you, and you'll all, we'll all watch your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.. Thank you, Mr. Landry. The next row, the second row on the right side, sir, in the blue? Mr. Pointon, welcome back.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll go very brief, since I, you can refer to my comments from the special hearing earlier, but I would just, again, like to advocate for sidewalks and ask you to, respectfully encourage you to vote to approve the amendment to chapter 160 regarding sidewalks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Pointon. That's another item on the agenda, folks, for anybody who cares. And out there who paying any attention to anything else. Sir, in the blue, would you like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Bob Dignazio. I'm a township resident, and I'm here to speak about the agreement regarding the polo field. I'm not only a Haverford Township resident, but also the athletic director at Jack Barak Hebrew Academy in Brinmar. Barak, formerly known as Akiba, is a Delaware County school, technically in Radnor Township, but less than one mile from the polo field. Barak has strong ties to Haverford Township. Our middle school director, Matt Dorsh, is a Haverford Township resident. Our former middle school director, Chris Farrell, is a township resident. And even our current MVP of our boys' soccer team is a Haverford Township resident as well. You may not know this, but Barak is actually one of the top-ranked academic schools in the state of Pennsylvania. As an independent school with grades of just 60 to 70 students, our alumni punch above their weight. Barak's impressive list of alumni includes CNN anchor Jake Tapper, sports writer Mitch Album, and Pennsylvania governor and future president of the United States, Josh Shapiro. By the way, if any of this sounds interesting to you, we have an open house for prospective students on Wednesday night. I'm here tonight because--
My, my children are too old now, at this point. She's already graduated from college, so sorry. Next time.
I'm here tonight because our middle school soccer teams have used the polo field for many years. Because of our challenging dual curriculum, which combines secular subjects with Hebrew and Jewish studies, our students have very, very long days, which is why they absolutely love jumping in the van after school to take the four-minute ride to the polo field for soccer. I tell people that if you want to see pure joy on a middle schooler's face, come to a Barak soccer game at the polo field. Our conundrum, and really why I'm here, is that while Barak has used the polo field, we have primarily obtained permits from Lower Marion Township. With Blackrock moving in and Lower Marion Township moving out, I'm afraid that Barak will be left in the cold, and our school community is, is afraid that we'll be left in the cold. So that's why I'm here to ask, keep eye in hand, that the folks at the township work with Barak to ensure that we are able to receive similar hours at the polo field or other township-owned fields, such as Haverford Reserve or nearby Cooper Town Elementary School. Our needs are not large relative to other schools. Each, for example, each Barak middle school team only plays three days per week. Our teams do not practice or compete on Fridays and Saturdays for Shabbat. Additionally, we would be happy to work with the wonderful Township Parks and Rec staff, shout out to Eileen Matola and Larry Woods, and leaders at the school district. And we would patent, we would offer use of Barak's turf field and gym, which are in very high demand, to Haverford Public Schools or team groups on Fridays and Saturdays in exchange for consideration on Mondays through Thursdays at polo. It's my understanding that private schools in Lower Marion who have rented polo field in the past have already been given alternative field space, and I ask that Haverford similarly help Barak the Delaware County school. I'm hoping, I'm open to finding ways in which the township and Barak can partner for the benefit of our students and our township families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dignazio. Is there anyone else in that row who would like to speak? All right, moving to the second to last row, is there anybody in that row who would like to speak? And finally, in the back row on the right, is there anybody back there who'd like to speak? And just one last time, for anybody in the audience who would still like to speak on any item, including this one, speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing none. Thank you all for your comments and for your, the seriousness with which you have taken your advocacy and your concerns about this issue. We are, this item is on our agenda in just several items after things we have to do. And at that point, we will all be discussing the issues that were raised and taking up the issue of whether or not to consider and/or adopt this plan. But for the couple of people who spoke on other issues, just let me say, Ms. Rigatos, I think, has left. I'm gonna encourage our PD to check in with her to see about the, being blocked in her home or any other harassment that she may be dealing with, with folks in her street. And I would also, I, I wanna thank Mr. Diskin for a very, very thoughtful, serious analysis of the issues on the unit block of Colfax. And we appreciate the deep dive you've done in this work, and I, I promise you that it will be looked at, taken very seriously, and, and we will, we will talk with you personally about that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to-- --------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------
I do know Commissioner Forstie Grupp would like to speak about the library after Commissioner Forstie Grupp is finished with that. Then I invite any other commissioner who has any update to give on any committee that they chair. Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Thank you. I'd just like to say a few words about an institution at the very heart of our township, and that's the Haverford Township Free Library. For nearly 90 years, this library has stood not just as a building, but as a pillar for education, culture, and community spirit. Since its inception on a very chilly day in December of 1933, and through its humble beginnings in a small storefront, this library has been a steadfast presence in our lives and in the lives of our children. Growth and adaptation are at the core of our library's story. By 1936, it had already outgrown its first home, finding a new one in the historic Haverford Township Bank Building. This wasn't just a change of location, it was right next door, but it was a promise that the library would be a dynamic force that evolved alongside our community with community support. Fast forward and pass, you know, you fast, sorry, fast forward through the decades and the dozens and dozens of times we all have taken children to the library to check out books, and here we are at another pivotal moment. We've had discussions, we've made plans, we've applied for grants, we've had applications for zoning variances that began in 2021, and they have finally borne fruit. Last week during a special session, the Board of Commissioners awarded the contracts and approved the funding for the construction project. That's been something we've been thinking about for a couple decades. So we're embarking on a renovation and expansion that's not just about the space, but also about meeting the needs of every one of us living here in the township and anyone who is considering moving to the township and children yet to be born into our township. It is a very exciting time. Our younger children will have dedicated space in the new library to explore the worlds within books. Our teenagers will have dedicated space for their learning and leisure. Our seniors also will have dedicated space, a comfortable corner to relax and talk and engage with each other. We are also creating new rooms for community meetings, a maker space for innovation, tutoring room, and 21st century offices for our fabulous library staff who have put up with a library that seems to always have no air conditioning or a plumbing issue, but that will be in the past. It's a transformative time. We're not only renovating a building, but also reinforcing the idea that the library is the center place for all of us, no matter who we are, how old we are, where we come from, what we believe, the library is for everyone who wants to walk in that door. So I believe that the library is really the community center of our township, and we are standing on the threshold of a dream that's been very long in the making. We appreciate the support of our community in this new endeavor and also everyone's patience, because our main library is closed and we have our, you know, our annex opening up soon after Thanksgiving at Manoa Center, and we'll have our library bus, but it will require some patience and flexibility. But we have, in the very near future, we will have a brand-new renovated library that will really serve our needs, and it will be a very proud moment for everyone in our community, and I look forward to that, and I hope you all do too. Thank you so much for letting me make those remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grupp. Thank you for your leadership on the Library Committee and your leadership before that as a member of the Library Board, and we will continue to benefit from your advocacy going forward. Is there any other commissioner who has a committee update for us?
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
As the Chair of the Commissioners Economic Development Committee, I'd like to report that our committee met and drafted a business revitalization and modernization matching grant program with input from our Township Manager, our Assistant Township Manager, and in partnership with Discover Haverford and the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. This competitive matching grant program, if approved, is designed to promote economic development by awarding grants of between $10,000 and $25,000 to businesses and commercial property owners for expenses related to renovating interior businesses, business dining areas, improving exterior facade and outdoor seating spaces, purchasing and/or installing energy-efficient equipment, or implementing technology upgrades to enhance online purchasing and customer engagement. It is committee's intention to discuss this program in greater detail at the December Work Session and to pass a resolution authorizing the use of $225,000 in federal American Rescue Plan Act funds at the regular Board of Commissioners meeting in December. Also, on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, I wanted to report that the township is offering free parking on three special days this holiday season. On Black Friday, which is November 24th, Shop Small Saturday, November 25th, and the Saturday before Christmas, December 23rd, parking in our township will be entirely complimentary. This gesture is aimed at encouraging residents and visitors to shop locally this holiday season. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. I will look forward to being able to park and not get any parking tickets, Chief Viola, on those days. Is there any other commissioner who has anything to report on committee activity? Hearing none, I will now invite the chief to come up and tell us about all the parking tickets that I got this week, as well as to give us an update on various things that have gone on in the township, including the monthly crime update.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chief, welcome back.
The chief's report for October 23, and I'll start off by saying parking tickets, 480 parking tickets were issued for the month of October. Thirty-three criminal arrests, three juvenile arrests, 118 traffic citations, 14 non-traffic citations, and 99 written warnings. On 10/26, and I reported this at the last meeting, because it happened a few days before that, the robbery at the bank, Sandander Bank on 116th Township Line, $380 was taken. The suspect was stopped about 100 yards from the bank and arrested, along with his 90-year-old mother. We had burglaries, too. Smoke Town Vapes, 1243 Westchester Pike, window was broken out, and $150 in cash or products was taken. Suspect has been developed, the investigation is ongoing. Unit Block of East of the Road, someone entered his locker garage and stole landscaping tools. It happened over a three-day period. Investigation is ongoing. And aggravated assault, 525 Westchester Pike at the District Court. Detective Fuller was assaulted while escorting an unruly male out of the courtroom. He was charged with aggravated assault, resisting arrest, and related offenses. Motor vehicle theft, 10-3, 625 Westchester Pike, was parked at, a mechanic shot the vehicle, it was stolen, and it was found a few blocks away. It was identified as a vehicle that was involved in the burglary at the smoke shop. Five vehicle thefts from vehicles of Manoa Shopping Center. Victim report, $300 worth of clothes were taken from her car. And then we got other ones, Hillcrest, Hillcrest, Tyson Road, and Grove Place, and all of the vehicles were unlocked. Bicycle theft at Haverford College, K-9 users, three. We assist Springfield Police for a foot pursuit after a theft at Springfield Mall. One on Block of Cedar Brook, report of a naked female wandering around the neighborhood. The suspect was located hiding in a si yard on White Marsh Road. She was taken in for medical evaluation, and more police request a K-9 assist on Rittenhouse Road. Also, a reminder for that holiday packages can and will be stolen by porch pirates, which is very big this time of the year. Prevent theft by having our packages delivered to a safe location. End of my report, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, suggestions about having a safe place to drop off packages? You know, should people get them at their offices? If people don't have offices, or for retirees, what do you suggest?
Well, you can put whatever address you want when you order online, and a lot of the package deliveries have drops at 7-Elevens and other places where you can pick it up or it's in a locker. So it's very easily done, especially on Amazon, and other vendors also do that. So it's becoming a huge problem this time of the year. They follow the trucks around. As a truck departs, you see the person, because most of it's videoed by doorbell cameras, and they grab the package and quickly take off.
Does anyone know if the post office still does, like general delivery, where you can go there and give your name, or?
I'm not sure. The post office hasn't been our friend recently, so.
That's what I was about to ask, too. That's a fair point. Okay. Well, anyway, it's a good reminder about the drop boxes that a number of shipping companies now use that do add a significant layer of security.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any others have questions for the chief before we excuse him? Thanks, Chief. The Bureau of Fire update is next on our agenda. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for October, there were a total of 82 incidents that were responded to by our firefighters. 62 were within the township boundaries, 20 were out of township for mutual aid. Incidents, average personnel was about 20 personnel per call. There were about 1,378 personal man-hours committed to those incidents. There were 1,218 hours committed to training this month, that month. We responded to one working fire, one technical rescue, and one vehicle accident with entrapment within the township. That was at Lawrence and Eagle Road, a vehicle accident with entrapment on the 11th. 227 Farwood Road, which the chief was the command officer there, for a basement fire. And then 50 East Eagle Road, which was a technical restoration of a construction worker trapped behind the foundation wall, and he was successfully extracted. And then we provided mutual aid to two working fires elsewhere in Delaware County during the month of August. Company 58 had three members complete the National Pro Board National Certification for Firefighter II Training. So we offer congratulations to those three members, Tom Berran IV, Melissa Wolfher, and Maggie Cooper. So congratulations to those three members of the Bon Air Fire Company, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Next on the agenda is our Township Auditor Update.
Well, congratulations to all of you who won your election last week and get to spend the next few years listening to me and my report. It's short, though, because, you know, Eagles didn't play this past weekend, so I read through the expenditures and the warrants. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, well, next move to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes of October 10th. Oh, I'm sorry. I already got rid of the Township Manager. How about that?
I was actually, honestly, Mr. President, I was going to suggest, why don't I just delay until each of the items that requires my input comes up later in the meeting? There are a couple purchases, a couple resolutions. We haven't had a chance to work through them at the work session, so why don't we talk through it and delay my report until then?
I think that's an excellent idea, so we will postpone you, Mr. Berman, until each place where you think your update is appropriate and always helpful. And then if you have anything left over after the last one, just go until you're complete. Then we will move ahead to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve, our regular meeting minutes from October 10th, and also our special meeting of the Board from two weeks ago, October 30.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of October 10th.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, additions, or deletions to any of the minutes from October 10? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, would you take the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Now for our consideration are the minutes of the October 30 meeting.
Okay, I move to approve the special meeting minutes of October 30th.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, additions, or deletions from my colleagues? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is approval of warrants. Commissioner McCluskey?
Mr. President, motion to approve the following warrant, number 112023, totaling $6,297,899.43. General and sewer fund payroll for October 12th, 2023, in the amount of $725,622.89. General and sewer fund payroll for October 26th, 2023, in the amount of $812,944.14. General and sewer fund payroll for November 9th, 2023, in the amount of $28,477.53. General fund disbursements, number 112023, in the amount of $3228,378.52. Sewer fund disbursements, number 112023, in the amount of $188,728.43. Community and developmental block grant fund disbursement, number 112023, in the amount of $36,097.39. Capital projects funds disbursement, number 112023, in the amount of $284,814.54. American Rescue Plan Fund disbursement, number 112023, in the amount of $275,535.17. Credit card statement ending October 27th, 2023, in the amount of $17,300.82.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the warrants? Hearing none, Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is two appointments. This is, these are appointments that are put into the hands of our Township Manager and/or Assistant Township Manager, Finance Director, and just for our approval. The first appointment for us to consider is the appointment of Markham LLP to serve as Special Auditor for the Township of Haverford's Act 511 Business Privilege Mercantile and Local Services Tax. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Markham LLP to serve as Special Auditor for the Township of Haverford's Act 511 Business Privilege Mercantile and Local Services Tax at a professional rate of $175 an hour.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I just have a brief question with regards to the interaction between these two appointments. I know Tri-State Financial Group is the actual entity that collects all of the taxes, you know, sends out the paperwork and collects it all to us. The Special Auditor, so that's a separate entity from them?
Yes, it is, and Markham is only brought in at our request or at the request of the collector when the collector suspects that somebody might not be properly filing.
Okay, so they're on an as-needed basis?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Motion to approve an agreement with Tri-State Financial Group for the administration and collection of Act 511 Taxes, Business Privilege Mercantile, and Local Services Tax for the period January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions about this agreement? Marion Township regarding the use and maintenance of Polo Field.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with Lower Marion Township regarding the use and maintenance of Polo Field. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, Commissioner Cavender?
Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment to remove the word unilateral on page, on page two, section three. So it would read, "Does not provide Lower Marion or any of its permities with the right to install any capital improvements, including but not limited to."
Mr. Hart, do you accept that amendment? That's the person who seconded the motion. Okay. Agreement is now revised to include that. Any other revisions or changes at this point, Commissioner Cavender?
No, not from me. I would like to make some comments, though.
Yes, please.
As the time. So I really appreciate everyone coming out. I've gotten to know most of you over the last two years, and I very much respect your opinions and all the knowledge and wisdom that you've imparted around Polo Field. I want to address a couple of things that were raised. The first thing is, well, actually, first I would like to talk about the bus pull. So I want to talk a little bit about whether we can take that off the table. I believe that we can, but I'd like to hear from our engineer and our director of Parks and Recreation, Brian Barrett. We talked about maybe being able to do some different scheduling, of a time buffer between the two slots. Do you think that would help reduce congestion in the parking lot that we were concerned about?
Yes, yes. And there's other examples where we have after-school sports at certain fields followed up by evening sports. And we typically, when there's game day schedules, share them with both groups so that the second group, the evening group, realizes they might be delayed a little bit depending on the end of the game. So we can make that information available to the permit holders so they're aware when there may be an issue at that 5:30, 6 o'clock time.
And Dave Panoni, our township engineer, can you talk a little bit about what, what we could do other than the bus pull-around that would not take up green space?
Well, we had, we had looked at previously dedicating the, the west end of the parking lot, the fore end, the entrance, to allow buses to make a turnaround in that area. The concern was, was user-generated, with some overlap use and everything, with, with the recreational minimizing or eliminating the overlap. You could certainly physically pull that back into the parking lot.
Okay.
So the turnaround would be similar to what we showed at that public, the public meeting, or the neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago. The turnaround could be, would be in the end of the existing lot, western end.
Okay. And I think our township manager is going to pull that up. So this is the design that was shown at the October 25 meeting, and it doesn't require any incursion into green space.
There is, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. There's a little bit of a bump out that we showed.
Okay.
You could see, they've, they've shown it right there. Just a little bit of bump out for, for the turn.
So I'd really like to go back to that original design and take the bus turnaround off the table. Do you, Chief Viola, think that that is going to be safe? I know one of the main considerations was safety, congestion, traffic. Do you think we can achieve that with signage and enforcement of that?
Yes, we can. We always have concerns with, with parking, any parking lot, not just up there. And what we had discussed, hopefully in the first month or so during implementation, we can have a physical presence up there to allow people to learn where they can and cannot park.
Okay. I mean, I think it'll be really important in this first season if we do this agreement to enforce the parking there. And to also, Brian Barrett, I hope that you can be up there as much as possible to make sure that congestion doesn't.
My plan was to be there on game day when that would be more of an issue, because when they're not having game days, they're typically done before 5:30.
Okay.
They're out well before the next group comes in.
Okay. And hopefully the PD can give a little bit more attention to that, especially our first season, to make sure everybody understands the regulations, make sure the buses aren't idling. I think that's a concern. And make sure that it's as safe as we expect it to be, and that everything's going to work like we think.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Dave, do you want to weigh in on whether you think this schematic still works, if we can make that change?
I, I think it's, it's one of those things that if the commissioners would like to proceed with this, this agreement, I think it's something that you have to give it a shot. Having discussed it with Panoni and also with Chief Viola, I think it, I think it's doable. And in terms of this turnaround and seeing how it works, we're still working with the neighbor regarding the driveway with, we've talked about that. It, it appears to fit as laid out on the plan, so I think I have some level of comfort.
Okay. I would like to take the bus pull-around off the table. I don't, I've heard residents, I agree, it's too much of an incursion on the green space. I think we can do it without cutting into our park space. That's area that's used for community, for children to play. It's one of the only open spaces for the community to use. We have a lot of field space, but as been, as has been mentioned, we don't have a lot of space for community and sort of neighborhood recreation. So I would ask that, that, that is how we consider handling buses. I want to speak a little bit about some of the details. The lease length, so the way I look at the lease length is, when we entered this situation, there's essentially, they own it forever and can use it forever and in perpetuity as it is. They wanted to continue that in perpetuity with no controls, with no agreement. And what we're able to do with this agreement is, we've pulled it back to 10 years. We've set new requirements for them to use the field. And those requirements, we can enforce if we own the field. We cannot enforce anything right now. We don't enforce anything right now. We share the field, we have a handshake agreement, and the Parks and Rec Department sort of work it out. So that's, when I looked at this, and when I think about whether this is an opportunity or not, I think we have to look at this parking context. None of us generated the situation that we're sitting in right now. That was a, a Board of Commissioners 80 years ago decided in Haverford Township that we didn't want that park. We gave that park away to be shared with Lower Marion, and that is what we are starting with here. It's being shared. It has always been shared, and it's in an agreement that we will share it. Under this new agreement, we are able to, to have accountability to the neighbors. We are not, as a township, and this is what really frustrates me, we can't be accountable to you if we don't own the park. And I feel like that's important. I think putting new rules and regulations on the park, holding all of our permities responsible, everything from trash and maintenance to how we're using the fields and how we permit them. Lower Marion using these permits, they're using the same permits they've always used. Lower Marion School District is a permitee on the field. They are required to follow the same rules and regulations of anyone. To me, there's much more of a risk of Lower Marion turning Polo Field into a stadium with, with no agreement. If we walk away from the agreement now and we have nothing, it goes, goes back to like it is. And if there's a plan to turn it into a sports stadium, we certainly wouldn't have any control over it at that point. I don't think. Excuse me. Excuse me. No, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me. This is my time to speak. Everyone has a time to speak.
I, I, please, please, we, ladies and gentlemen, everybody got a chance to speak uninterrupted, and, and everyone got even a second chance to speak again. Please. It is now time for the commissioners to consider this and for the commissioners to speak about it, and I ask for no more outbursts. I'm sorry? I, ma'am, thank you. And, and thank you now to now follow our rules, and now the Board of Commissioners is speaking about it. Commissioner Cavender?
So part of what I believe is important is that 40 years from now, another commissioner isn't sitting here saying, why are we doing it this way? This is an opportunity to change this historic dynamic. I think it's important. I think that we can accommodate them using their permits for a public school. The agreement clearly states, no other public school teams can use the field without our permission. None of these capital improvements can take place without our permission. That doesn't exist now. We do not have the ability to say no to those things now. So those are some of the things that motivate me. I think it's important that as two municipalities who share a six-mile border, we are able to have some trust and some ability to have a partnership, ability to trust in agreement that we have drafted as professionals, and ability to decide how we want to use this, this park within our township. So I would ask my colleagues to, to join me in supporting the agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Do any other commissioners have anything to share or speak or ask about, or add or delete or otherwise to the agreement?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Trombetta?
Thank you. I am prepared to vote in favor of this agreement tonight, and I'd like to applaud Commissioner Cavender on her extensive efforts to engage her neighbors over the past almost two years to develop an agreement that I do believe will benefit Haverford Township and its residents. As Commissioner Cavender already mentioned, and based on the previous agreement, Lower Marion Township had the right to use the fields. However, thanks to township staff and Commissioner Cavender's efforts, Haverford Township will now have the ability to regulate this property while ensuring the same level of usage of the fields by Lower Marion Township. As the park's owner, Haverford Township will have greater oversight, which means that we'll be able to address any issues with the use of our fields. And on top of this, the township has leveraged an historic investment from Lower Marion Township to the tune of over 275,000 for, for park improvements, park and other improvements. So I'm grateful to everyone who has been involved in this process and developing this agreement, and I will be voting in favor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
I listened very carefully to everyone's remarks and read all the emails that people have shared about this topic, and given a great deal of thought to this agreement that we are undertaking. And I'm looking at the agreement as it was posted on our township site, and it does say that it's the, it's the third whereas. Whereas, Haverford and Lower Marion have been jointly operating Polo Field for almost eight decades for the use of the residents of both townships. And the parties heretofore consider it advisable at this time to reduce to writing the understanding and practices heretofore in effect and those to govern future use. I think that's a really important whereas, that it has been a very informal agreement between the two townships. And yes, Lower Marion does seem a whole lot more powerful than Haverford Township, but that's not the case, especially in a court of law. And I think that this agreement will give us some standing that we do not have currently. I also take a great deal of comfort that in the third paragraph, it says, furthermore, if a permitee of Lower Marion wishes to make capital improvements to benefit the use of their athletic fields, Lower Marion shall contract with the permitee and, and shall obtain the express written approval of Haverford Township Board of Commissioners prior to permitting any capital improvements to be installed. We have to approve it. Lower Marion can't just do it unilaterally. We took out that word. We have to approve it. And then again, it says, on the fourth page, once again, Lower Marion agrees that no other public schools except Black Rock Middle School will be issued permits for use of any of the fields on Polo Field without the written permission of Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. And I say to you that as a member of our Board of Commissioners, I take very seriously my responsibility to protect the rights of our citizens and to do what I think is best right now, and with every decision and every vote. And I, I know that's the way every other member of our Board of Commissioners feels. We take our responsibilities very seriously, and I can't imagine any future board would do anything differently. So I do believe that this agreement is in the best interests to protect Polo Field for our use. And I want to thank everyone for their input, their discussion over the last two years. There have been public meetings, and Laura has, Commissioner Cavender has had many meetings and discussions, and I thank her for it. But it's also very important to listen to everyone when you come to public comment, and we do.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsti Grubb. Any other commissioners have anything they want to say on this? I will just add, when the opportunity became available, I guess it was almost two years ago, for the township to take ownership of the Polo Field, I thought it was an opportunity that was, that we would regret forever not taking advantage of. It was actually quite a surprise to me when I became a commissioner that the Polo Field was not ours. I was always under the impression it was one of our parks, and just that there was an agreement with Lower Marion that they could, that they could use it. And so the idea to be able to take ownership of one of the largest swaths of land that we have remaining in Haverford Township was an opportunity that was frankly, for me, too good not to, not to follow through on. There is another side to that, you know, to, to these negotiations, and that is our, our neighboring township, Lower Marion Township. So these negotiations were the part, you know, were the, were the product of two parties, each negotiating with excellent lawyers, and each negotiating with what they thought were the best interests of their own residents and, and their own townships. I have faith in my fellow commissioners, in Commissioner Cavender, to be representing and caring about and representing the interests of the Fifth Ward. I also have faith in the rest of my commissioners and myself that we have to think in terms of the township as well. And I also have a great deal of faith in our township solicitor, who I believe negotiated the best possible agreement that he could. I think, I think Haverford Township, and I think the people of Haverford Township are protected by this agreement from things that could have happened in the future under this amorphous agreement that existed and really created no accountability for anybody except an organization that really lives more in imagination than in reality. And so the opportunity to do this was something that I could not let go by. And as was alerted to earlier, for another board years from now to say, how did they not take advantage of that opportunity when they had it? So I will be voting in favor of this, of this agreement. Time is of the essence. We have been negotiating this with Lower Marion for almost two years now. They have acted. At Lower Marion Town, Lower Marion School District and Lower Marion Township have come to agreements that are to the satisfaction of our solicitor and our board. We have come to an agreement that is to the satisfaction of our solicitor and under consideration by us now as a board. And we know that if this agreement doesn't go through and we fall back on the existing agreement, we will lose rights that we fought for the last two years very hard to obtain. So for that reason, I, I will be voting for it, and I do recommend to my colleagues that they vote for it as well. None of that is in opposition to or, or a rejection of, of the concerns that folks have, have brought here, but is, is, is delivered with the promise that these concerns are listened to, and these concerns will matter as we proceed as owners of this field and as we administer the regulations that are going to run it, and as we work cooperatively into the future with Lower Marion about the use of the field for both Lower Marion and for Haverford Township. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
No.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item on our agenda? We will have a, there, there will be an opportunity at the end of this We will have a, there will be an opportunity at the end of this meeting for public comment after the rest of the items. So if anybody has any questions or comments, they will be free to come up and deliver them then. The next item on our agenda is ordinance number P-14 of 2023. Traffic first reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-14 2023, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Special purpose parking zones established in front of 1611 Juniper Road, establish 613 Windwood Road on the east side of Kennelworth Road in front of the side entrance.
Second. We have a motion and a second for two, for two, sorry, two special parking zones, special parking zone permits. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item, 14, this is on the agenda by mistake. I will entertain a motion to strike 14 from the agenda.
Motion to strike number 14.
Second.
Okay, a motion to strike and second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 14 is stricken from the agenda. And item 15 on the agenda is ordinance number P-18 of 2023, a subdivision in land development and streets and sidewalks. First reading. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-18 2023, amending chapter 160 subdivision in land development, section 165-B for C and chapter 157-1, streets and sidewalks, require the installation of sidewalks as a subdivision or land development requirement.
Second.
Mr. President, just to review, in the six years I've been on the board, it's not frequently, but it occurs that when we get these subdivision plans passed on by the planning commission, they have suggested that we add sidewalks, and we often defer. And what has been suggested that if we change this from an optional to more of a requirement, it's more likely that we will be able to install the sidewalks. As has been pointed out, I think this is safety. This is something that we're going, we've seen in the outreach to the community in our comprehensive plan, that people are looking for a safer community in which to walk and to bike, and this is a step in that direction. This only apply, it doesn't mean that sidewalks are going anywhere. It's only in the subdivision and land development plan. We do not have to require them. We can, in lieu of requiring a sidewalk, ask for payment, and we could put that into a fund. For those that we don't feel are necessary, put it into a fund to build sidewalks in places such as maybe Haverford Road that could use sidewalks for pedestrians. So I urge everyone to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. I guess one thing I will count on with the township is to, well, let me ask you, who will be the decision maker with regard to a, let's say, the funds necessary to buy a sidewalk indulgence? I'm sorry to use such a historic phrase.
I think that we reach a township engineer to give us a estimate of what a sidewalk would have cost to put in.
And I trust we'll also take into account kind of the practicality of a sidewalk in certain areas. I know we've addressed that in the past. And, but, great. Any other questions or comments about the sidewalk ordinance? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is a resolution, Resolution 2337 of 2023, ARPA purchase for police department of two interceptor power bikes. I will entertain this motion, this resolution. From somebody?
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2337 2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the usage of monies from the American Rescue Plan Act for the purchase of two interceptor power bikes light kit, or excuse me, light and siren kit, dual upfit front and back lights and sirens from recon power bikes, Fort Wayne, Indiana, in an amount of $9,805.98.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item for our consideration is another resolution, Resolution 2338 of 2023 relating to the library and protocol for change orders in our construction project.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
A motion to adopt Resolution number 2338-2023, authorizing the township manager to approve change orders, cost increases, and similar expenditures in amounts not to exceed $30,000 related to the construction of the Haverford Township Free Library renovation and addition project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is also a resolution, Resolution 2339 of 2023. This is a professional services contract township-wide, Safe Streets for All.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2339 2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the usage of monies from the American Rescue Plan Act for a professional services contract with CH Planning, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, in an amount not to exceed $160,000 to create a township-wide qualified safety action plan under the Safe Streets for All program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I have a brief question. Mr. Berman, what time we enter into this agreement? What's the turnaround until we'll get like their report?
We expect it to be sometime before July.
Okay.
There's a grant application deadline in July for that SS4A program, and we're hoping to meet that.
Perfect, thank you.
Dave, can you talk a little bit more about what the program's going to include and how what we did in Brenford to start with is going to play into that? Because I think
Yes.
that traffic study was part of leading to the acquisition of this grant.
So yes, I'll start by saying, ARPA funds allows us to create this qualified safety action plan. And it's, we're trying to create a safety action plan that works under the Safe Streets for All program. Our goal is to use ARPA funds so that we don't have to delay this project any further and miss any future grant deadlines. So this whole Safe Streets for All program supports the development of the safety action plan, and it identifies most significant roadway safety concerns in the community, and it identifies the implementation of certain projects and strategies that will help us address roadway safety issues. I know there have been, I think the biggest concern that we hear about at the township is traffic. And we're chasing it all the time. And we all have great ideas about what we can do to help mitigate it and make things safer. But this qualified safety action plan is going to be drafted by a professional consulting firm, and it will help us not only identify the issues, but then have the, you need this qualified safety action plan in order to apply for grants and to be eligible for grants under the Safe Streets for All program. And so our goal here is to become eligible for the grants, and we're going to use ARPA funds to get it done. And so it'll take about seven months. And this, the grants that we're talking about are under Safe Streets for All, which is part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that was adopted, I think, in '22 or '21. And so it's a five-year program. We're going to hope to get some grant monies and address some of the safety concerns in the township.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
I think this is a really important contract that we approved tonight. Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health just published a study that said that the statistics about traffic fatalities in the U.S., that that is the leading cause of death for people here in the U.S. between the ages of one and 54, traffic accidents. So I think anything that we can do with this study and implementation of the recommendations for this study to make our township safer for pedestrians and bicycle riders and other modes of transportation we see out there on the streets would be very prudent.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstiegrupp. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Getting back to Commissioner Cavender's question, we did conduct meetings, outreach meetings with the constituents in the Brenford area. They went well, but the issue was, we found that doing one neighborhood at a time, one neighborhood at a time, was very time-consuming. And so that's why we're going to try to get the whole township-wide plan done all at once so that we can begin to move on some of these implementations.
Dave, can you talk about implementation for the Brenford traffic study? What's the next step on that?
I will get with the planning consultant who you met this evening. CH Planning stopped by, and we discussed it with them. I need to find out what the next application deadline is to see if we can get something in under that program.
And are there any of the recommendations that we can implement that don't require funding? If we're looking at changing the direction, for example, of Buck Lane, is that an expensive project?
Changing the direction of Buck Lane is something that we could consider. We would have to work with the police department and really come up with a good plan to make the circulation work in that neighborhood. But that was, I do recall that being one of the recommendations.
Yeah, just things like that. It would be nice if we could, you know, kind of set some priorities for, I guess, low-hanging fruit that's not expensive. That's just an example I could think of.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I will note, Mr. Berman mentioned it, but I'll say it, that the president and principal planner of CH Planning could not be here late this evening for when we considered this, but was here earlier at our public hearing and had a chance to meet us on the board. And we do look forward to a very profitable partnership together on this plan. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Item 19 on, next on our agenda is an item that I need to have removed from the agenda. I will entertain a motion to strike it.
Motion to strike.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. 19 is stricken from the agenda. Number 20 for our consideration, Resolution 2341, statewide local share assessment grant, Vermont Road and Glendale Road intersection safety improvements and Darby Creek Trail extension.
President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2341-2023, that the township of Haverford of Delaware County hereby requests a statewide local share assessment grant of $1 million from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for Vermont Road and Glendale Road intersection safety improvements and Darby Creek Trail extension, and that the applicant does hereby designate David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cuthbertson, Assistant Township Manager, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the township of Haverford and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this resolution. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Just to clarify, this money had already been allocated by the state. I guess this is one of the formalities with regards to that. Has there been any updates on the proposals circulating with regards to that intersection?
So this, we do have a $1 million multimodal transportation fund grant, and this money would supplement that.
This is in addition to?
This is in addition.
Okay, second million.
And Penone has been working on the design of both the trail and the intersection. And we do not have a formal decision that we're ready to come back to the board with in terms of what that final layout's going to look like. We have to go through PENDOT and have some conversations with them. It's going to be a little bit of time.
Thank you for clarifying.
Two million bucks, this intersection's going to look like Vegas.
And that includes the trail.
The trail as well, which is in a wet area.
I don't know if that's the design look they're going to go for there.
Well, if nobody else has anything to add, why don't you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next resolution for our consideration, item number 21 on the agenda, is a statewide local share assessment grant for fire apparatus replacement.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2342-2023, that the township of Haverford of Delaware County hereby request a statewide local share assessment grant of $1 million from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for fire apparatus replacement, and that the applicant does hereby designate David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cuthbertson, Assistant Township Manager, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the township of Haverford and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution or this grant? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Finally, the final resolution for us to consider tonight is Resolution 2343 of 2023, also statewide local share assessment grant for the Brookline, for the development of the Brookline Park.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2343 2023, that the township of Haverford of Delaware County hereby requests a statewide local share assessment grant of $1 million from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Brookline Park development, and that the applicant does hereby designate David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cuthbertson, Assistant Township Manager, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the township of Haverford and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments about this particular grant? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now move on to the portion of the agenda about township agreements. We have one agreement to be considered from Public Works.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve independent contractor agreement with Par Recycle Works, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, for services relative to seasonal leaf collection.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Now for consideration is our contract awards. First one, a professional services contract.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award a professional services contract in the amount not to exceed $160,000 to CH Planning of Philadelphia to create a township-wide qualified safety action plan under the federal Safe Streets for All program. Second.
We have a motion in a second for the Safe Streets contract. Any questions or comments? This is obviously the part of a previous resolution to use ARPA funds. Hearing no questions or comments. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We have two contracts for consideration for parks and recreation. I'll entertain a motion for the first.
Yes, I moved to award the Grange Estate retaining wall reconstruction contract to ocean construction in Williamstown or New Jersey in the amount of $82,999, submitting the lowest responsible bid CDBG funds.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this contract? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We have a motion for another parks and recreation contract?
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of tree removal at Veterans and Grange Fields to MG Tree, Brumall, PA, in the amount of $22,350, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We have two contracts to consider for the Bureau of Fire. I'll entertain a motion for the first one.
President, make a motion to issue a purchase order to first-choice fire apparatus of Hanover, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $1,222,352 for one E1 Typhoon chassis walk-in rescue truck under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Contract 013-052.
Second. We have a motion in a second for this contract. Any questions or comments? Mr. Township Manager, just want to give us a heads-up on this?
I sure will. We've been working with the Bureau of Fire, as you know, earlier this year. We had a consultant complete the fire and EMS study for the township, and this, this project that we're trying to undertake this evening, we're asking your authorization for this purchase order and another, will address some needs in the township with older apparatus that is reaching the end of its useful life. And this one is the Rescue. It's an E1 Typhoon chassis aluminum walk-in rescue truck with seating capacity for eight, and it's a heavy-duty rescue truck. And we've been working back and forth with Pinoa and also with the dealership, and this is the recommendation for replacing that rescue truck. Chief Norman is here, and I wanted to ask you, what's the year on the existing piece? So it's a 2006 truck, and the lead time is about, I'm going to say probably about 30 months. And by the time it gets here, the truck will be approximately 20 years old and due for replacement based on the schedule that we've put together and discussed with a consultant.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Berman, anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Hearing none? Call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
President, make a second motion to issue a purchase order to Glick Fire Equipment Company of Hatfield, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $4,792,000 for two Pierce Enforcer tandem axle aerial trucks and one Pierce Enforcer pumper truck under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 013E22-242.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this second contract with the Bureau of Fire? We're coming from the Bureau of Fire. We've heard an explanation from Township Manager, Mr. Berman. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
And I also wanted to say hello to Chief Baker, who's here from the Lanark Fire Company, and of course, Chief I always with us every month.
Wow. Thank you all, chiefs. Thank you for your service to our community, and we're pleased to place these orders for this equipment, hopefully make your folks' job easier.
If I may speak for myself on the behalf of the chiefs, thank Mr. Berman. This is a large undertaking. A lot of conversation went on to fine-tune the program and to get the prices down. Fire apparatus is expensive. We're all taxpayers, and we realize that. But with Dave's support and obviously the commissioner's support, we're very thankful to move the fire service forward. Thank you again.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, Mr. Berman. And yes, this is a significant undertaking. It's a lot of, it is a lot of money and a lot of assets, but it should, in some ways, reflect the esteem with which our board and our residents and our constituents hold all of you chiefs and your people in. We wouldn't just trust these kind of money and these kinds of assets into the hands of anyone other than top-season professionals, which I can very comfortably go to sleep tonight, knowing that I and my colleagues voted that way. So, thank you again.
Thank you, commissioner.
Our next item, this is now the time in the meeting where we continue the Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. So those folks who did not get onto the call list earlier but wished to get up and speak about something that wasn't on our agenda are invited here to say anything they'd like within reason. And also, anyone who would even want to speak or comment on an item we took action on this evening. Now is that time. As always, I'll start with the left. Is there anyone to my left who would like to speak? First row, second row, back row chiefs, anything? Oh, yes, please. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for the preparation of the study. I'd like to add a little context to that. We had a discussion in the region recently, pair of two very serious. I'll be a part of it. I would like to actually refer to that. I was born in Jersey in Berlin. I scored.
Thank you. Where bicycling was.
You just sound like you're being broadcast, but now, now you really are.
She knows I know better than to not hit the button. But, so it is very important that we really, because we do have two major roadways, and I think we're one of the few townships that can say we have two four-lane highways essentially going through the township. And whenever there's an issue on either of those roadways, as you know, we do get significant blowback through the neighborhoods, too. And I'm sure that the gentleman who was speaking about his particular situation would agree with that. So I'm excited to see what the final results are. And since I live near the intersection of Vermont and Glendale, if it is Las Vegas, I hope that the slot machines are friendly. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else on the left side of the room like to speak? Anybody here on the right have anything to add? Well, we will move on. The next item on our agenda is new business. Is there any member of the board who would like to introduce any new business to the board for consideration this evening? Hearing none? The next item is other business, and I will start with Mr. Gondak. Recently re-elected, Mr. Gondak.
Thank you. I do want to just take a second to recognize that this past Tuesday were elections, and just to say a basic thank you to everyone who kind of made that happen. Obviously, one of the foundations of our society is our democratic election system, and it takes a lot for that to go, for that to occur. So just a general thank you and congratulations to all of the people who participated, whether it be the candidates, or their supporters, or the people who worked at the polls, the machine operators, and the judges of elections. There's a lot that goes into it. And so I want to just give a shout-out to everyone who participated, and just continue to encourage people to remember that, you know, we basically have an election every year. You know, everyone always pays attention to the biggest one, being the federal when the president's, you know, on the ballot. But, you know, there are, you know, election cycles every single year, and every one is very important to, you know, to our country and to our community. So just keep that in mind and keep turning out the vote. By way of just a couple of announcements, the Westgate Hills Civic Association is holding a fall food drive this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. If you're looking for more specific information with regards to what they're looking for, please feel free to go to their Facebook page. But I will say that in addition to, you know, assorted food and non-food items, they are accepting donations of supermarket gift cards and cash that can be used to, you know, make these purchases. I do have an email address if you want more information. It is toner92, T-O-N-E-R, at 92, at yahoo.com. So I encourage people to participate in that this weekend and give what they can give. Talking about giving, Thanksgiving is coming up, so I just want to wish everyone an early Thanksgiving and hope that anyone who's traveling for this holiday, safe travels to go to your respective destinations and enjoy family and friends on that holiday, and remind people that the night before Thanksgiving is also traditionally the biggest bar night of the year with lots of people out there imbibing. So let's also remember, as we kick off the holiday season, to drive safe, drive sober, or get, you know, some level of designated driver. Just moving into December briefly, just because our next commissioners' meeting is going to be after this event, December 9th is also going to be the Westgate Hills Civic Association Christmas, annual Christmas tree lighting event at the park. Stay tuned on their Facebook page for more updates and information on that, but it is a great time. Family, family event, come out, get the hot chocolate, you know, listen to some music and light the tree. So that's all I really have. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a great, great night, great month.
Mr. Gondak, thank you for your comments. Commissioner Forstie-Grupp?
I'd like to extend another thank you to the members of the Historical Commission for all their work on putting together and designing and negotiating about the historical resource plaque. It is very exciting to see that and to imagine that it will soon be affixed to our old township building. So thank you, Brian Ramon, Susanna Barucco, Stacy Maddox, and all the other members of our Historical Commission for doing that. And as I thank you, it makes, it reminds me that there are many boards and commissions here at the township that need further citizen participation. So just as Commissioner Gondak talked about, all the citizens who ran the polls to make Election Day possible, there are all these ways that citizens here at Havford Township can participate and provide their knowledge, their expertise, and their time on commissions such as the Planning Commission or the Shade Tree Commission, the Health Advisory Board. And all of those applications are going to be due next Wednesday, yeah, next Wednesday, November 22nd, no later than 4:00 p.m. The information is on the township website, but if you're interested in getting more involved in the township, I encourage you to join those commissions because it is a wonderfully dedicated group of people who just want to make our township better. And lastly, I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving and fills it with family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie-Grupp. Commissioner McCluskey, newly re-elected Commissioner McCluskey.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who went out and voted. I just wanted, over the last month, I had the opportunity to attend the Oakmont Civic Association's Halloween Parade, and the Oakmont Civic Association is sort of a group that's re-energized and reformatted recently, and I just think it sort of highlights the benefit we have of those types of neighborhood associations in this town and the vitality that they can give to a neighborhood. In the third ward, we have four very active neighborhood associations, and they all bring unique characteristics and unique energy to their particular neighborhood, and it requires a lot of volunteer time. So thank you to all of them. I was also thinking, as we were going through our votes, we voted on a couple grant applications and approvals for grants. Those grants take a lot of work, both from Mr. Berman, from Miss Cuthbertson, and others in the township, and it's really the easiest vote we have in terms of saying we want to apply for a grant to seek money. So it's something easy for us to do, but it does take, require a lot of work from township employees and just our appreciation for that because it will, it benefits us to get grant money. It allows us to do things and not spend taxpayer dollars. So with that segue in mind, I do just want to remind everyone that next Monday, November 20th, at 7:00, we do have our preliminary budget meeting where Mr. Berman will make a presentation and we'll go over our preliminary budget for the calendar year of 2024, and look forward to that. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. Yes. What? Oh, thank you, Commissioner McCluskey.
Also, two days from now, November 15th, Commissioner Trombetta and I are hosting a town hall in this room, so that's at 7:00, I believe. Yes. So it was rescheduled because of the Phillies and their playoff run, and unfortunately, that didn't turn out well. But the town hall, I assure you, is going to be just as exciting as those baseball games.
It'll be a grand slam, no doubt.
Thanks.
Anything else before we move on to?
I'm sure there's something else.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. Next is also newly re-elected Commissioner Cavender.
Thanks. I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, but I do want to say thank you to all of the residents who took part in the Polo Field discussions over the last two years. As I've said before, the agreement isn't perfect, but it's a whole lot better than we were when we started, and I really believe that we made the best out of a situation that, that we were presented with. And I also want to thank the township staff for all of their work in helping us get this agreement right, including our solicitor, John Walco. We had a lot of work that went into this, a lot of sort of last-minute calls, questions, expecting, you know, things quickly, and I really appreciate the work you put into making sure we did this right. Thank you to everyone for voting. I just want to congratulate my fellow commissioners on their re-elections as well, and say that, Commissioner Wexler, I will personally miss you being off the board. And I think that's all I really have. I appreciated what Sherry said about the boards and commissions next week. We have a lot of fifth ward residents who serve on those commissions, and so I encourage all of them to go ahead and apply again, and I'll look forward to having those conversations. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Newly re-elected Commissioner Quinn.
Well, thanks, Larry. This, well, this, this week, leaves will be, or collected in my ward, so get all of your leaves, your leaves out. If you haven't gotten out, I don't say go, go out now and rake them, because that would be late and it'd be dark, and you might have had a drink or two, so don't do it. And Brook, Brook, Brookline is being repaved this week. And I know a lot of people in my ward thought they would not ever see this day. So this week, the road's being, being paved. So that is a great, 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 is a great, great news. I know I got lots of calls to thank the state. I tried to take the credit for it, but we know it's the state, so.
Saw you personally out there milling it, so. You did it, yeah.
So thank, thank you to them. And Winterfest at the Grange will be taking place on November 20, or, 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 or 25th from 1 to 6. So get down to the Grange. It's a great, great, great place. And I would also like to thank everybody in the, in the seventh ward who went, went in out to vote. It is an honor to serve you. And I thank, thank you for, for, for the support for four more years. And we're going to get a lot done with this board, and I'd like to congratulate my friends at the other end, Brian, Brian, Kev, Kev, Kevin, Laura, Laura, Laura. And thank Bill for all of his, his, the, his, well, his ears. I'll save my speech about him for a month. So, and then I'd also like to say congrats to my good, good friend Mike in the audience, who will be taking the reins in Ward, Ward, Ward 9. So thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, in keeping with our traffic safety and pedestrian safety, acknowledge that this is Crash Responder Safety Week. November 13th to 17th, 2023 is Crash Responder Safety Week. Every day, responders risk life and limb to help drivers out on the road. And each year, hundreds of these individuals are struck and many killed by negligent, distracted, and impatient drivers. Please join us in raising, this week, in raising awareness concerning the dangers these individuals face every time they stop to help our fellow travelers. The theme of 2023 is to protect those who protect you, emphasizing the traveling public's role in keeping responders safe while responders make roadways safe for all road users. All of us can help save lives by moving over a lane or slowing down when there is a vehicle with flashing lights stopped on the side of the road or in a travel lane. In addition to being the right thing to do, moving over is also the law. Pennsylvania has a move-over laws which require motorists to move over or slow down to provide a buffer for people who work to keep our roads safe. And also, for one of my constituents, Tony Morinelli, is unable to attend meetings at night. He asked me to read a, an email he sent me. Dear Commissioners, I see the work being carried out along Caricon Drive, which encourages to the new awareness of this cradle of Haverford Township. Those of us who began the work before the days of COVID feel that the creek is now receiving proper attention. A number of residents have been asking about the current clearing and planting. It would be good to have notice from the township outlining this excellent restoration to encourage and inform the community at large about the environmental endeavor that is going on. Such work should not go unnoted. And just, I think I've mentioned in the past, the township has had an ongoing effort to remove invasives, to do planting, to improve our stream banks, not only along Caricon, but also along Darby and in other areas along Cobb's Creek. As part of that, actually, I want to thank, there were, last weekend, or no, the last weekend on October, about 100 trees were planted along Caricon Drive. The volunteers were out there planting the trees along with Caricon. They also planted them in Beechwood Park. And there will be another, this coming weekend, more trees will be planted. Oh, I think these are along in Merry Place, along that area. Brian, do you know? With the tree planting? Yeah. Okay, on Darby Creek. Also, some of the work that gets done there, the master gardeners of Delaware County have been an ongoing effort to improve the, the property around Nider Hall. They also, it's dramatic improvement over the last couple of years. They're also involved in maintaining the grain, some of the gardens at the Grange. And finally, I want to just note a passing of a remarkable resident in my neighborhood, Malcolm Woody Woodwin. Woody and his wife have lived in Haverford Town, probably lived here over 50 years. They've been married 65 years, six children, and in Haverford Town tradition, three of them live within a block of the Woodman's. Woody was just a friendly, energetic, engaging individual. He was really the life of our neighborhood. I mean, people, the church in North Philoelphi was packed with Haverford Town residents to acknowledge his passing. It was really, he is someone who had a great impact on, I think, on our neighborhood, and we will, he will be sorely missed, and I just wish him to rest in peace.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes. First, I'd like to offer my heartfelt congratulations to Commissioner-elect Mike McCollum. Mike, if you would stand up just to be recognized, he will be taking over. And also with his same last name, the Bon Air section of Haverford lost a longtime firefighter, Bon Air member, Mr. Pat McCollum, who was Mike's uncle, passed away. Funeral was standing room only at St. Dorothy's last week as well. It's a shame that we have to lose those guys. I also want to offer my congratulations to the fire companies. We've spent and invested a lot of money in you guys, and it's worth it. I always had the, the privilege of, the training at our fire company's display is truly unbelievable. And just a good example that stands out was last week with the SEPTA rescue that happened out in Radnor. Township Resources went out there, especially Manoa Fire Company, and there was a gentleman trapped and went right into action. Our Chief Norman, the crew, went right into action. The training, it was second nature to them. They did that with the equipment that they had in the rescue truck currently. It was, it was a pleasure to watch, to know there and see the confidence, especially the confidence that was seen by the other fire companies that were there. So until Chief Norman arrived, there was kind of a quandary as to what to do. The SEPTA workers were kind of trying to do something but didn't know what to do. But is the expertise and the training pays off? And so I think the investment in those trucks, the $6 million we're paying, is well worth every penny of it, especially what we serve, save from not having to pay a fire company that didn't know what to do. You got, the rescue there was as professional as any paid fire company in any big city that could be done. They had the tools and the expertise to do it. They did an excellent job. And as they did in the other rescues, the bus on Westchester Pike in the truck, stuff that you just don't see. I mean, I think the chief can tell you that. You don't practice those things. You just have to improvise. Use your expertise in there. So I'm proud, proud to say that Haverford Town was well represented in the rescues the last couple of weeks there. Hilltop Civic Association has been going through one of their downturns, as Kevin said. Civic associations ebb and flow, but I'm proud to say that in the past two weeks, I've had six young women come that want to revitalize the civic association. So Mike, you're going to start off with a brand-new group of volunteers that are young, aggressive, assertive, and we need them. So it's, so get those parades and everything back, back on track. And then lastly, Thanksgiving is coming up. Safe travels, everybody, especially our young college students. They come back, they miss home, they want to have a good time, they want to be at our good places that we have in Haverford Town. Encourage them to be safe, and we'll help them as well. But just be safe. We've had too many young people accidents the last couple of weeks here, both traffic and accidental drownings, everything that you can imagine. That could be fall, a young family that's been doing it. So please be careful. Enjoy the holiday. Enjoy your family especially. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Trombetta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to join Commissioner McCluskey in inviting our residents to a joint town hall on Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. So we look forward to a lively discussion. I also wanted to invite everyone to attend Discover Haverford's Haverford Town Holiday Festival on Brookline Boulevard on December 2nd from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. Promises to be a great, family-friendly event. Finally, I wanted to mention two special recycling events. First, the Environmental Advisory Committee is inviting Haverford Township residents to bring their whole, undecorated and uncarved pumpkins to Orner's Garden Center at 15 West Eagle Road in Haverford Town during business hours between now and December 6th. The pumpkins will be given to a farm to feed their animals. Second, the township is excited to be among the first in southeastern PA to be partnering with the Pennsylvania Resources Council to host a limited-time glass recycling program from December 2nd to December 7th. During the six-day pilot program, individuals can drop off glass bottles, jars, and jugs from 7:00 a.m. to sundown at the Township Administration Building, lower parking lot. By doing so, we're diverting glass out of our recycling stream, which will reduce the cost of recycling for the township. We're also moving the glass to a facility that recycles nearly 100% of the glass into new bottles and jars, while glass-collected curbside is less likely to be recycled. So I just wanted to give special thanks to Alexis DeSanti, Amy Cuthbertson, and Dave Berman for their work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. As I did with re-elected commissioners, let me also congratulate Commissioner-elect McCollum. Looking forward to working with you and meeting with you. Congratulations on a successful election. You have big shoes to fill. When you hear next month, you'll hear a lot more about it as we say goodbye to our friend Bill Wexler, and I'll save all that until then. But we do look forward to your arrival on the board. I do want to thank everybody that came out tonight. It was for, for people, it was a very, very passionate and personal issue. It affects their homes, their, their, their lives, their neighborhoods. And I just wanted to commend all of them for their advocacy and for their, for their professionalism. I respect their opinions, and as I promised before the vote, these are issues we will take into account as we administer this agreement, not just, not just as we enter it. And again, a reminder, I think Kevin said this, but we do have a meeting next, next Monday is our budget meeting here. Only item on the agenda is, will be the preliminary budget. So look forward to seeing folks, if anybody wants to, do we publish that in advance? Up on the website? Do we publish it that night? Goes out that night? Okay. And then, of course, our second reading of that and consideration of that is at our regularly scheduled December meeting. So between now and our December meeting, we will be celebrating Thanksgiving. And I will turn to Mother Teresa for a very important admonition for us all. Mother Teresa asked, what can you do to promote world peace? Go home and love your family. So think about that. Do what she says this Thanksgiving, and we'll see if we can make the world a better place. That is all I have. Unless there are any other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned.